I'd like to call a meeting to order, please rise. We could have a moment of silence for our troops to come home safely when they're done, and our law enforcement to come home safe, and keeping our thoughts and prayers also that Navy SEAL that was just killed. Thank you. Dennis, please.
(inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Notice of this meeting pursuant to the Open Public Meetings Act, NJSA 10:4-10, is being complied with and shall be entered into the minutes of this meeting.
Roll call.
Freeholder Armwood.
Here.
Freeholder Bellante.
Here.
Freeholder Kenny.
Here.
Freeholder Nara.
Here.
Freeholder Tamara.
Here.
Freeholder Valenti.
Here.
Freeholder Director Rios.
Here. You have some recognitions?
Uh, yes, there's one recognition. Recognizing the honorees at the Middlesex County Pan-African Flag Raising on Saturday, February 4th, 2017.
Is there a motion to adopt?
Motion.
Second. Motion by Freeholder Valente, seconded by Freeholder Tamara, roll call.
Freeholder Armwood.
Yes.
Freeholder Bellante.
Yes.
Freeholder Kenny.
Yes.
Freeholder Tamara.
Yes.
Freeholder Valenti.
Yes.
Freeholder Director Rios.
Yes. Tonight we will have the introduction of the 2017 budget. And before we get the introduction through, I just want to make some comments. Tonight we're going to introduce the 2017 Middlesex County Operating and Capital Improvements Budget, or Budgets. I want to commend this Freeholder Board, especially Finance Chair Charlie Kenny, and our entire county workforce for their dedication to serving our residents and helping us to maintain our austere financial practices that help us provide quality services at the lowest possible cost. I thank the Freeholders for working with our department heads to produce the budget proposal we put forward tonight. Middlesex County has the policies and systems in place that have helped us reduce our overall debt by $192 million over the past three years. We have maintained our AAA bond rating for more than a decade. This is crucial to our capital improvement master plan, through which we will invest more than $50 million in 2017 for critical projects to ensure the safety and well-being of all our residents. Projects include road reconstruction and bridge repair, investments in our parks, recreational education facilities, and top technology investments to make, that make county government more effective and efficient in delivering our services. Our excellent bond rating enables us to complete these projects at lower cost. The county has and will continue to seek out ways to boost our local economy and keep our expenses in check to ensure we remain responsive to our taxpayers. This is not an easy task as we continue to face funding cuts and additional costs imposed by the federal and state governments for critical programs. This year alone, our cost to provide mental health care for our residents will increase by $1 million due to the inability of the state to maintain its mental health facilities. State funding for our MCAT transportation services also has been cut by $264,000 this year, continuing a nine-year trend of cuts to this critical and mandated service. The governor also has signed into legislation bail reform and a speedy trial initiative, which may have merits for those going through the proceedings. However, it will cost Middlesex County more than $1.9 million in 2017 for additional staffing, equipment, and other expenditures. Once again, the state is passing down to the counties the cost of a program it is mandating. It puts us in the position of possibly having to cut programs and services in order to stay under our budget cap. This Freeholder Board passed a resolution in October to urge the governor and the state legislature to establish a fund to pay for this mandate. I have had numerous conversations with our state legislators and John Donadio, Executive Director of NJAC, the New Jersey Association for Counties, asking for help, all to no avail. There is still no funding mechanism for this state mandate, and the counties are left to fund it. Totally unacceptable on our behalf. Typical state mandates that don't help us. Be assured, the Middlesex County Board of Chosen Freeholders will make every effort to reduce our costs and generate new revenue so we do not have to cut our services. In short, the 2017 Middlesex County budget that we introduce tonight is the product of a government that works diligently on behalf of the people it serves. As we work toward adoption of the budget, we will continue to assess each program and expense and seek out ways to increase revenue to ensure we are meeting the needs of our residents. With that, I would like to ask Freeholder Charlie Kenny to introduce the budget proposal.
Thank you, Director, and good evening, everybody. It's great to see such a large crowd out here for the introduction of our budget. Tonight it gives me a great pleasure to do that introduction with Joe Peretti, the proposed 2017 Middlesex County Operating Budget. The budget is a result of the hard work of our finance department led by Joe Peretti and our administration, and of the entire Middlesex County workforce. Just to give you an idea of how this works, it's not just done in two months. This is an ongoing battle throughout the year. Joe has taken the initiative to assign different people from the finance office to the different sections of our county chain, department heads, and they worked throughout the year to make sure that we stay within budget and that we're prepared when the new budget comes along so we can have a budget like the one that we're introducing tonight. 2017 proposal represents less than one, less than a one cent increase in our tax rate to our taxpayers, and it averages out across the board in the county, depending on the town, to about $20 for the year. The $458 million plan is under the 2% mandated cap, and it continues a nine-year-long trend that we've had here in Middlesex County of introducing budgets with minimal increases. We're able to do this because Middlesex County has led the state in implementing fiscal, responsible budgeting policies. We have worked very hard, even before I got here, to be fiscally responsible, and that shows through the budgets that are presented and the one that is being presented tonight. We're including our policy to refinance old debt to take advantage of the lower rates, on which Joe will go into exactly how much we've saved over the last couple of years by tackling such an issue. We are also the only county in the state to not use surplus funds to balance our budget for six years in a row. And I don't know if this is in Joe's speech, it might be, and if I do, I'm stealing the line. Most counties, it's two years, right?
The most is two years.
The best trend that we could find was two years in any other county. Middlesex County has not used surplus in six years to balance our budget. The policies have helped us maintain our excellent AAA bond rating, which helps us to offer, which enables us to lower the cost of running county government, but also helps us in the towns that we represent by offering them the use of our AAA bond rating. We have made smart investments in technology to produce our productivity and effectiveness. Our employee wellness program has helped us lower our healthcare cost, and we continue to control salaries and wages, which are up about 2% over the last year. All of this is good news for our taxpayers, who will continue to be provided with the most effective and efficient services at the cost they can afford. Basically, what I was trying to say there is, we're not cutting programs or things that people in the county have come to rely on just to make this budget work. We're working in-house, and we're doing the financial controls to make sure that it works. So at this time, with no further ado, I would like to introduce our CFO, Joe Peretti, to walk us through the highlights and the details of our 2017 proposed budget. Joe?
Tonight I'll be introducing the 2017 Proposed County Budget. The budget is comprised of three key components. Salary and wages of $122,799,000. Operating expenses of $335,690,000. And revenues of $78,058,941. As a result, the amount raised to be raised by taxation is $380,430,059. As in the past, this represents a tax rate increase of less than a penny per $100 valuation to the average householder in the county. Salary and wages. Salary and wages are up by less than 2%. Unfortunately, due to the state's unfunded mandate of the Bail Reform Act and Speedy Trial Act, there exists $1.6 million additional increase to the salary budget line item for a total increase of $3,799,000. Under operating expenses, the key drivers are the following. Health insurance. Year-over-year, nationally, national trends have been averaging about 6.5%. The county has managed to be slightly below that level. We are continuing to maximize efficiency in our county fleet. For the first time, we're going to introduce leased vehicles to our fleet. For year one of this trial plan, there will be initial investment for those vehicles slated to be replaced, either because they're too old or they have too much mileage. This $1.4 million investment will ultimately reduce annual maintenance costs by over $300,000, it's estimated. In 2017, we'll continue to invest in technology infrastructure with projects such as the deeds and mortgage system, the new financial system, and also equipment upgrades for our municipal services. These investments are critical in order to provide the proper level of services for our taxpayers. For the ninth, as the Freeholder Director mentioned, and for the ninth year in a row, we see an increase in the state's mental health patients. The state is shifting its burden to the counties. To give you an idea of the magnitude of the increase, in 2012, the budget line item for this item was $3.7 million. This year it's over $6.5 million. That's an astonishing 76% increase in just five years. Our adult collection center is also up, but that's due to new medical and food contracts, as well as a new jail management system. On the other side of the graph or the chart, you'll see other items. In particular, I want to draw your attention to the bail reform speedy trial. It's an additional $300,000. We already talked about the 1.6 million in salaries. This is the additional amount that adds up to $1.9 million. And also, we have the VOTEC schools, which is under a 2% increase from last year. Our commitment is to keep the budget as low as possible, and that's mainly visible if you look at trend over the last five years of our operating budget, which has increased slightly over 1% on the average for the last five years. As far as revenue are concerned, the revenue increases are mainly attributed to real estate transactions, the increase in transactions in the county, and also our shared services agreement with both Mercer and Monmouth County for our medical examiner's office. Freeholders in your packet, you will find a capital budget, proposed budget for this year. It's a summary format, and this year, capital improvement budget provides over $50 million to upgrade and maintain infrastructure in these areas. Freeholder Director mentioned many of them, but we go into human services, businesses and developers, well, public safety. We maintain all the capital budgets for these, all these areas. The formulation and structure of the capital budget is closely tied to the county's debt strategy. In order to maintain the county's AAA budget, bond rating, and reduce costs, in 2014, Freeholder Director Rios and Freeholder Kenny spearheaded an effort for a strategy to reduce total net debt and annual debt service, and the results are the following. We are the first county in the state to adopt a debt service and a surplus fund policy by resolution. As the Freeholder mentioned, our net debt has decreased since 2013 from $1,702 million to this year to about $510 million. That's a decrease of $192 million. We haven't used surplus for six years in a row, as Freeholder Kenny mentioned, and we are the only county in the state that have done that. Our research shows us that some counties have done it for as much as two years, but that's the most. As you can see on this graph, the black line represents the amount of surplus used to close budget gaps in prior years. As of 2012, we stopped that practice, and you can see the increase in our, the gray line represents surplus fund balances, and you can see that there's a direct relationship of not using any surplus funds and to increase your surplus level. As a result, currently, our surplus level is at 12.8% of our operating budget, which is the amount needed to continue retaining a AAA rating. It's always the intention of Board of Chosen Freeholder to introduce and adopt the budget as early as possible in the year so the county can deliver timely and efficient services to its residents. Once again, we're the first county in the state to introduce a budget. Are there any questions, Freeholders? If not, I'd like to thank the whole Freeholder Board for your assistance, in particular, Freeholder Director Rios and Freeholder Kenny for their guidance and leadership. I'd like to thank the county administrator, and also all my staff, which has worked very hard during this process. In particular, Isma Abbas, Budget Director, who's here tonight, has been working feverishly the last few weeks, day and night, and also Gabe Cookie, our Assistant Controller, who's here tonight as well. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Joe. I also like to thank John Palamina, who's worked diligently with all our department heads and directors, and I'd like to thank all our directors and department heads that have worked with us since the beginning of last year, we were starting on this process. So it's a long process, as Freeholder Charlie Kenny said, and we will get to the goal that we're looking at. Okay. At this time, the clerk will read previously adopted Resolution Number 17-48 by Ty Loane.
Authorize increase in 2017 tax levy cap limits and establish, an establishment of a cap bank to be increased by 3% in the amount of $7,534,609.51. Authorize public hearing to be held on March 2nd, 2017, at 7:00 PM in the Freeholders' Meeting Room.
At this time, I'd like to open up the meeting to the public on Resolution Number 17-48, only. I move the call.
Second.
Hold on. Would you like to speak?
Yes.
State your name and address. And this is only on this resolution here.
Yes. The explanation that we got, right?
No, just the cap, the cap bank resolution. Just the cap bank resolution.
It's not including what the specification?
No. The future meaning.
Yeah, ma'am. But...
Go ahead, Director, I'm sorry.
There's another public portion that you may make comments on at the end, closer to the end of the meeting.
About this?
If you have any questions. Yes. And then, of course...
There's a public hearing.
At our one-second meeting, we will have the public hearing on that. Do you want to add anything, Charlie?
No, that was all I was going to say, was the public hearing.
Anyone?
Move the closed public portion.
Second.
Motion by Freeholder Tamara to close, seconded by Freeholder Valente. All in favor?
Aye.
Proposed, motion carries. Okay, the clerk will read the summary of the proposed budget.
Total of general appropriations, $458,489,000. Dollars for 2016 is $439,544,000. Less anticipated revenues for 2017, $78,58,941. For 2016, $70,581,000. Amount to be raised by taxation, $308,435,59. For 2016, $368,963,000.
Is there a motion to introduce the 2017 budget?
Motion.
Second. Motion by Freeholder Valente, seconded by Freeholder Tamara, roll call.
Freeholder Armwood.
Yes.
Freeholder Bellante.
Yes.
Freeholder Kenny.
Yes.
Freeholder Nara.
Yes.
Freeholder Tamara.
Yes.
Freeholder Valenti.
Yes.
Freeholder Director Rios.
Yes. You have correspondence?
First, I have to read the budget notice.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Annual budget of the County of Middlesex for the fiscal year 2017. Be it resolved that the following statements of revenues and appropriations shall constitute the county budget for the year 2017. Be it further resolved that a summary of the said budget be published in the Home News Tribune in this issue of February 16th, 2017. The Board of Chosen Freeholders of the County of Middlesex do hereby approve the following as the budget for the year 2017. Notice is hereby given that the budget and the tax resolution was approved by the Board of Chosen Freeholders of the County of Middlesex on February 2nd, 2017. A hearing on the budget and tax resolution will be held at County Administration Building, New Brunswick, New Jersey, on March 2nd, 2017, at 7:00 PM, at which time and place objections to said budget and tax resolution for the year 2017 may be presented by the taxpayers or other.
Correspondence?
Each Freeholder has been provided with a list of correspondence received by the clerk's office since our last meeting. This correspondence will be kept on file in the office of the clerk of the board for reference.
Is there a motion to accept?
Some will.
Second. Motion by Freeholder Valente, seconded by Freeholder Tamara, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Proposed, motion carries. Minutes for approval.
The Board of Chosen Freeholders' regular meeting, January 19th, 2017, at 7:00 PM.
Is there a motion to accept?
Motion.
Second. Motion by Freeholder Valente, seconded by Freeholder Tamara, roll call.
Freeholder Armwood.
Yes.
Freeholder Bellante.
Yes.
Freeholder Kenny.
Yes.
Freeholder Nara.
Yes.
Freeholder Tamara.
Yes.
Freeholder Valenti.
Yes.
Freeholder Director Rios.
Yes. Ordinances, introduction and first reading. The clerk will read ordinance number 431 by Ty Loane.
Refunding bond ordinance of the County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey, providing for the refunding of certain outstanding general obligation bonds of the county to achieve net present value debt service savings and authorizing the issuance of not to exceed $45 million aggregate principal amount of general obligation refunding bonds of the county to effect such refunding and appropriating the proceeds therefore, and authorizing a public hearing to be held on Thursday, February 16th, 2017, at 7:00 PM and publication thereof.
Is there a motion to adopt ordinance number 431 by Ty Loane?
Motion.
Second. Motion by Freeholder Valente, seconded by Freeholder Tamara, Freeholder Kenny.
Real quick, if you remember, late last year, we were looking at refinancing some bond debt that we had, and once we got ready to move on it, the interest rates climbed on us. So it became not viable for us to do it at that time, financially viable. So now, now we found that there is the time, that there is savings on this, we do meet the state expectations, so that's why we're moving forward with this refinancing ordinance.
Thank you. Roll call.
Freeholder Armwood.
Yes.
Freeholder Bellante.
Yes.
Freeholder Kenny.
Yes.
Freeholder Nara.
Yes.
Freeholder Tamara.
Yes.
Freeholder Valenti.
Yes.
Freeholder Director Rios.
Yes. Are there any resolutions to be added? There are none. Any resolutions to be amended? There are none. Any resolutions to be held? There are none. Any resolutions to be voided? There are none. At this time, I'd like to open up the meeting to the public on any resolutions listed. Please state your name and address, and you have five minutes.
Good evening, members of the Board. My name is Charles Cradaville. I'm from New Brunswick, and I'm the editor of a community newspaper. It's called New Brunswick Today. It's available in print and online at newbrunswicktoday.com. I have a few questions. I think the first one is probably on your page 6, 181. Buckeye Port Reading Terminal, and what I'll do today is just I'll ask all my questions, and maybe you could answer them afterwards so that I can get through them. The Buckeye Port Reading Terminal, I want to understand if there's a new pipeline going to be built in Middlesex County, and why the Freeholders are supporting another pipeline, given the history of their, you know, the infamous explosion in Durham Woods. The next one is right below that, 182. I want to ask about this underground storage tank removal in Perth Amboy, the future site of the waterfront park, and I want to understand who's going to pay for that. I recall, I believe this is the land that was sold by Mr. Rosen Garden, is it, to the county, and I want to understand who's going to pay for the removal of this underground storage tank. Also, would like to understand a little bit about 191, which is a $4.7 million application, I guess, and the county's agreeing to match that with $1.5 million for a waterfront park in Perth Amboy. I want to understand if this is the same waterfront park, or if this is a different project, and just really would like to hear a little bit about what's planned and what the timeline is for that. And then, that's all I have until the end of the agenda under the county prosecutor. And this is an issue that I want to thank the new Freeholder, Ms. Nara, for speaking with me about, and I want to, it's number 227. I asked about this concept of hers last time, and she promised to look into it. I want to understand why it's a secret from the public that the identity of this investigator who's getting to, I guess, travel to Kansas City and learn about Windows forensic analysis. I believe this trip occurred on January 9th through 14th, according to your own agenda, and I don't see any reason why the identity of the person who got this special training should be a secret. I don't believe there's any basis for that, and I expressed that to Ms. Nara, and I also expressed that to her predecessor, Mr. Polos, and he tended to agree with me that there was no basis for that, and I want to understand if the new Freeholder shares the position of her predecessor on that issue.
Well, first, I'll answer that question again. As I've stated to you in the past, this is as far as the integrity of the prosecutor's office, to protect witnesses, to protect the prosecutor's investigations on who investigators may be, and again, it's in the best interest of the integrity of the prosecutor's office not to give his, the person's name, or person or persons name when they go for training.
I'm sorry, sir. Who are you protecting? Who is, who's being protected by this secrecy?
We are protecting the investigations, or the prosecutor is concerned about protecting investigations when there are people involved doing their work as far as investigating crimes or issues from their office, so that's what the prosecutor's...
So it's a secret who the Middlesex County Prosecutor sent to Kansas City, Missouri, to get training? That's a secret, and we're protecting who? Who are we protecting there? The investigator?
We're protecting the integrity of investigations. Mr. Cradaville, we went through this a number of times, and I'm going to give you the same answer, that the prosecutor feels strongly about that.
Respectfully, sir, there's a Freeholder who's in charge of public safety...
You have five minutes.
Yes, and I'd like to use them. Respectfully, sir, there's a Freeholder who's in charge of public safety here, and the previous Freeholder who was in that position was an honorable man named H. James Polos, who I spoke to about this, and he agreed with me that there was no basis for it to be kept a secret in situations like this where the event, the trip, the seminar, whatever it was, happened in the past. There's no basis for that. And I respectfully asked for a moment with the new Freeholder, Freeholder Nara, after the last meeting of your Board, and I went up to her and I spoke to her about this, and she promised to look into it for me and get me an answer. So respectfully, sir, could I ask through you, could you please ask Freeholder Nara, who's in charge of the public safety portion of your roles here, could I please hear from her about her position on this?
Well, as you know, any questions that come to the Board, they go through the Freeholder Director, okay? First. Secondly, I don't know how true or accurate your comments are as far as the comments from former Freeholder H. James Polos, because he's not here to confirm those comments by you. So I don't know if that's accurate or true of what you're saying, that you're saying he agreed with you.
That's time.
You can feel free to ask him yourself. Could I please hear from the Freeholder? She's elected by the people of this county.
Your time is up.
I would like to hear from her, and can you please answer my other questions?
Your time is up.
Will you answer the other questions?
Your time is up. You'll get responses from, I guess, Mr. Kelso as far as that agreement with Buckeye, I believe, or Rich. Rich Walner, can you answer that question as far as the Buckeye agreement for Perth Amboy? Or Woodbridge, I'm sorry.
This is part of the new facility that the...
It's not a new pipeline, it's part of building out the facility that already exists.
The power plant? Or is that the power plant? What facility?
This is the Buckeye facility itself in Woodbridge.
In Woodbridge, on the Amara Road.
Forgive me, I don't know. What type of facility is it? A compressor station, or a power plant, or a... A compressor station, or a power plant, or a, what, what is it?
Not sure.
Yeah, I think they're going to be storing.
Well, then, why don't you, Mr. Wallner, why don't you reach out to Mr. Cradaville and get that answer for him? Okay? Tomorrow or in the next few days? Okay? And as far as the Perth Amboy site, a waterfront, the removal of the underground storage tank, Rich or Rick?
Money's an aspect for that.
On the site, there was an underground storage tank that was found and will be removed.
But the cost associated with that, the remediation, which is responsibility of the owner?
Right.
The, the former owner?
Correct.
Right. Okay, thank you. Please, I just urge you, 181, if we don't know what facility this is, please don't pass this until we know. If the freeholders don't know, you should not vote for this. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else?
Move the close the public portion? Never mind, hold on.
Oh, oh, hold on, hold on. And this is open to the public on any resolutions that are listed, if you have any questions or comments.
Yeah, good evening. I just want to make, Mark Rizzoli, Mark Rizzoli, living in Bruce Street, Old Bridge, New Jersey. I just want to comment on this gentleman's question. As a 26-year veteran of law enforcement, I've been to numerous schools all over the multiple states, it serves you no purpose to print anybody's name in any type of blog. It, it definitely undermines investigations and put witnesses in jeopardy. So I, you know, I've noticed that a lot of you bloggers like to try to do that.
You have no idea what.
I'm behind the scenes, so I suggest you sit with law enforcement before you come up here and put a big show on. Thank you.
Anyone else in the public?
Move the close the public portion.
Second.
Motion to close by Fielder Tamaro, seconded by Freeholder Valente, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Is there a motion to, Mr. Kelso, is there any, anyone that wants to vote on anything separately?
I do, Freeholder Director, 17-171-R, dash R.
Anyone else? Okay, Mr. Kelso?
Yes, Freeholder Director, a motion would then be in order to adopt a consent agenda consisting of Resolution Number 17-162 through Resolution 17-229, excluding Resolution 17-171 to be voted upon separately.
Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion to, by Freeholder Valente, seconded by Fielder Tamaro, roll call.
Freeholder Armwood?
Yes.
Freeholder Belante?
Yes.
Freeholder Kenny? Freeholder Nara?
Yes.
Freeholder Tamaro?
Yes.
Freeholder Valenti?
Yes.
Freeholder Director Rios?
Yes.
Now, Freeholder Director, it would be appropriate to consider the resolution excluded by Freeholder Tamaro, and that's Resolution 17-171.
Is there a motion?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Fielder Valente, seconded by Freeholder Armwood, roll call.
Freeholder Armwood?
Yes.
Freeholder Belante?
Yes.
Freeholder Kenny?
Freeholder Nara? Yes.
Freeholder Tamaro?
Excuse me, President not voting.
Freeholder Valenti?
Yes.
Freeholder Director Rios?
Yes.
At this time, I'd like to open up the meeting to the public on any, any questions or comments. Anyone from the public would like to speak?
Ma'am.
Ma'am, if you want to talk.
Please state your name and address, and you have five minutes.
Yeah, my name is Teresa Vivar. I'm the Secretary Director of Latin America Unida, based in New Brunswick, and I live in New Brunswick. Need the address? Or just New Brunswick?
I think your name and, and, and address is good.
Yes.
All right. I live in Prosper Street, New Brunswick. Well, basically, I came here because I think with everything that's happening around, I represent a community that is being, you know, criminalized without being criminals, and things affecting us right now, and I want to know how the freeholders are going to help this community that I represent. And, and also, I think it's important for us to understand how these different funds, the budget, so also we as taxpayers, even people believe it's not, we pay taxes as well, documented or not documented people. So we want to be part of the different commissions or different meetings, we're invited to different meetings in which we're talking about recreation facilities improvement, we want to know how we can access to these funds. So, for example, using New Brunswick, my organization has more than 700 childrens in the football soccer groups and, and two different leagues, and we want to know exactly how we can help to repair these field soccer spaces, because, all the parks inclusive. We want to help, we want to be part of it, but we want to know exactly how this procedure is going to happen. And the other part as well, how the police in, in Middlesex County are going to respond to the community needs. We have parents and childrens right now calling from schools because they worry about how the police are going to be affecting their lives, and also the detentions by immigration agents. I just want to put it out there, maybe it's not about exactly, want to have a response right now, but I want to put out there that is a concern in the community, and the schools are going to be soon losing childrens because they don't want to leave their parents. Also, we want to have problems in the social services because nobody wants to get out there to look for these services because all these statements out there. So please help us, and please make a statement how we want to work with the police. We want to work with the police, but we don't want police to become, and as a statement this, this evening from the New Brunswick Mayor's Office, a statement that New Brunswick, for example, is no sanctuary, and the police is going to comply with the ICE enforcement agents. Please let me know how we can cooperate with you, because we don't want things to get worse for the community. Everybody's going to affect it, and our jobs also are going to affect it if the community start getting, you know, fear and not getting out of the, of the, of the homes. Thank you.
I just wanted to say a few words in reference to your comments, that criminal activity is up to local law enforcement to enforce, and, and, you know, for the city of New Brunswick case in point that you're speaking about, you know, that would be up to the New Brunswick Police Department. If it's brought to their attention, I think it's important that it should be brought to their attention if anyone notices any kind of criminal activity, and, and I'm sure that they would respond in a proper manner, in a proper timeframe. As far as parks and recreation, recreation programs, if they're local parks, New Brunswick or the local municipality will maintain them or upgrade them, or improve them, or make more parks. As far as our parks, we're always keeping up, trying to keep up to date with our parks and improving them, and, and making them more accessible for our residents. So, but we will keep your comments in mind.
Just I want to clarify, I understand that the police has to take care of criminal activities. We're not talking about criminals right now. ICE is detaining people in the streets of New Brunswick, and, and people is notifying and thinking that it's the ICE, the police department.
Yeah.
Today, the statement made by the city of New Brunswick Mayor's Office made people believe that it's actually the police department, not only here but anywhere in the county, is going to work and cooperate with ICE agents. So that's my concern, and because it's happening right now. We have people that have been detained in New Brunswick, but ICE enforcement agents.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else in the public? Yes, sir? Please state your name and address, and you have five minutes, sir.
Thank you. Richard Walling, 33, Dearbrook Boulevard, North Brunswick. Just this evening, I'd just like to call to everyone's mind, and good evening, Freeholder Director, I apologize, and members of the Board and staff and public. The world is now commemorating the centennial of the First World War, which at the time was known as the Great War. From Flanders to Mesopotamia, from the Baltic to Africa, millions of men, women, and children suffered as they fought on the allied side to make the world safer democracy. And even though it's true that that, the peace after the Great War failed, those men who suffered and the people who suffered, their lives should still be remembered to this day, because I know in my case, it was my grandfather's generation. My mom's dad was in World War I. Among those Americans who rallied to the flag were thousands of Middlesex County men. Some enlisted under age, some were family men well into their 30s when they were inducted into the military. More than 200 of them never came home. As a proud lifelong resident of Middlesex County, and as a historian, I strongly urge that we not forget their sacrifice in the name of democracy. To this end, I suggest a project to identify and honor the 200-plus men who gave their lives for their fellow Americans. One small step in this process will be, will take place on February 18 at the East Brunswick Library. The Harlem Hellfighters, the New Jersey Connection, will be presented. At least four men from Middlesex County served in the Harlem Hellfighters, including Archie Redd of New Brunswick and Charlie Jewell from Metatchen. They were all members of the All Volunteer National Guard Unit, which became known as the Hellfighters. The first two Cratagair, the highest French military honor ever given to American soldiers during World War II, were given to two men from that regiment. You and the folks here tonight and seeing this at home are cordially invited to attend. The program is being sponsored by the Afro-American Historical and Geological Society, New Jersey Chapter, the East Brunswick Human Relations Council, the New Brunswick area branch of the NAACP, and the Old Bridge Village Heritage Center. It's, again, everyone here is welcome to attend. The program starts at 2:00 PM, but the doors to the program will open up at 1:00 PM. It's on February 18. The day also marks the premiere of a scene from, from Harlem to Hell and Back, the true story of the Hellfighters, including some folks here in Middlesex County. But let us collectively work together to take this opportunity of the centennial of the Great War, that we all work together to honor the sacrifice of the men who gave the ultimate sacrifice for their fellow Americans. Thank you.
Thank you.
And this is just a program flyer. I'll give it to the Secretary of the Board.
Appreciate that.
Thank you, folks.
Thank you. State your name and address, and you have five minutes.
Thank you very much. My name is Scott Fergang, and I am the Chairman of the Board here at the State Theater, and on behalf of the State Theater Board and staff, I, we want to come here personally and let you know that we will be honoring Freeholder Director Ron Rios and you, the Middlesex County Board of Chosen Freeholders, at our benefit gala this year. We are going to be awarding you the Leadership in the Arts Award. The event will take place on Saturday, May 13. We ask that you put that in your iPhones, Droids, Bepers, Blackberrys, anything you have. We ask you to get your tuxes ready, your gowns ready, and please be there, and put your dancing shoes on, and have a great time. We are so thrilled that our entertainment for this year will be six-time Tony Award winner Audra McDonald. For those of you that don't know Audra, Audra has won more Tony Awards than any other performer ever in the history of Broadway, and we would love you all to be there, and we thank you for all your support.
Thanks, Scott. I'm Tom Cardo, President and CEO of the State Theater, 15 Livingston Avenue, if you haven't been there before. We're thrilled that we're able to, to give you this honor this year. I can't think of a more appropriate award winner for this. The, the freeholders and the history of the State Theater being a county building, and the support that the county has given that the State Theater over the years is remarkable, and we want to recognize that this year, and make sure that our relationship continues to be very, very strong. We are entering a very new and, and very promising era with the project happening next door, with the Devco buildings and the new buildings going up, and, and in the future our renovations, so it's a very exciting time for us. We are very proud of the fact that we bring nearly a quarter of a million people down to the core of Middlesex County to enjoy entertainment in this wonderful arts district that we've created here in the middle of New Brunswick. So again, thank you, and we hope to see all of you at the gala this year. Thank you.
I say thank you for giving that honor to us, and we enjoy working with all of you and supporting the arts. As you could see, that we demonstrate that, not only in New Brunswick, but throughout the, the county.
That's right, and you're.
We appreciate the honor.
And the trust fund that you've created for operations of all these arts organizations is a great example of, of support of the arts in the entire country. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the public? Please state your name and address, and you have five minutes.
Good evening, once again, Charles Cradaville, New Brunswick, New Brunswick Today. I'll start by saying congratulations to you, Freeholder Director, for the honor. That sounds really impressive. Congratulations. I also do want to briefly respond to Mr. Rizzoli and just encourage him to check out our work at newbrunswicktoday.com. I think it might give him a better perspective on why we do what we do. We do seek to educate people, and I think we're doing a fine job of it. I also want to thank the Deputy Director, Ms. Belante, Freeholder Belante, for her service. I understand she's going to be leaving the Board, and it's a sincere thank you for your service, and I wish you well in your retirement, and I would like to hear at the end of my remarks what the procedure is going to be to replace the Deputy Director of this Board. I also want to echo the concerns of Teresa Vivar tonight about the Mayor's Office of New Brunswick. I think it is crystal clear now to folks in this area that the Mayor's Office is part of the problem, in more ways than one. There is rampant corruption in the city of New Brunswick. There are no less than five employees currently suspended from their jobs, not just for administrative things, but actually because they're charged criminally, charged with crimes like fraud, bribery, official misconduct, theft by extortion, and there is a real, something's rotten in New Brunswick, and we need to change very quickly. So I hope that everybody's watching will take notice of what's going on in New Brunswick. It's an important city, it's the county seat here, and I think every freeholder should pay attention to those issues that are going on. New Brunswick Today strives to cover those issues. When people break the law, they should be held accountable. And I do want to, you know, look back on the memories of last year. I did, I filed an ethics complaint against Freeholder Belante, and I want to apologize for that, and I want to, I want to say that I respect the decision of the Ethics Board in that case. They, they exonerated her, but a good thing happened. A good thing came out of that case. The Ethics Board had to reconvene and do its job, and hire an attorney, and start having meetings again, and I think that that was a positive step. And I want to stress that the integrity of the county is only as strong as the reputation of the people that are involved. So the Ethics Board made a choice at their meeting, most recently on January 31st, you might recall, I've mentioned this at the last meeting, they made a choice to hire an attorney named Anthony Vignolo. Mr. Vignolo has a lot of public jobs, but he doesn't believe that he needs to file the same financial disclosure statements that everyone else has to file in those attorney positions. The attorney for, I mentioned all the boards at the last meeting, I went through them all, they all have to file financial disclosure statements. So it doesn't really make sense that the Board that's supposed to enforce that requirement, that their attorney is somehow exempt from that requirement, and that he doesn't have to file a financial disclosure statement. So I filed a complaint against Anthony Vignolo for failing to file those statements. He's required to do it annually. If he wants to be the Ethics Board Attorney, he has to file a statement declaring where he gets his money from. There's a reason this law is on the books. This law is so that citizens and folks like me, journalists, can determine when there is a conflict of interest in a person's duties that might prevent them from fairly exercising their duties and, and performing their responsibilities. And I believe that most people want to live in a county where the Ethics Board has integrity, and where their attorney is not violating the law that they are set, set out to uphold, that their mission holds them out to uphold. They're supposed to be enforcing this law, and they have an attorney who's breaking the very law they're supposed to be enforcing. That is a crisis, and I think that the Ethics Board needs a new attorney. I think they made a mistake by rehiring Mr. Vignolo, and that's why I filed that ethics complaint, and that's why the Ethics Board is going to have to take action. And I would just like to hear from the County Council, since the Ethics Board stated that the County Council is going to be in charge of deciding whether or not Mr. Vignolo has to file that form, what is the County Council's position on this?
Carol is the definition of a good and dedicated public servant. She was an employee of the county of Middlesex for 40 years and served as the president of the Ask Me 3440 Union, the largest union representing Middlesex County employees. She served as a councilwoman and council vice president in her hometown of South Brunswick, also served as deputy mayor before becoming a member of the board in 2009. She has been a staunch advocate for workers' rights and safety. She has, through her work on the board, helped Middlesex County preserve thousands of precious open space acres for the enjoyment of all our citizens. I will miss her wit, her humor, her compassion, and her true caring for everyone, the taxpayers, the employees, everyone that lives and works in this beautiful county. Carol brought to this board such a love of working with everyone. This wasn't Carol's show while she was here. This was working for the people, all the people. And she exemplified that each and every day. I can't thank you enough, Carol, for what you have done. You've been, you've become a friend, a dear friend to me, and I always treasure your friendship. And I can't thank you enough for what you have done for us and being part of our family. And I wish you nothing but the best in the future.
Thank you. Well, Director, you said everything I had on this. I have nothing, nothing left to tell anyone about, except that I'm retiring because I need to be with my family. It's been a long time working, all these years, and I'm tired, that's all. I'll miss you guys an awful lot. I really truly enjoyed working with all of you, and you've all become friends of mine. Bless you, thank you. I want to thank you all. May God bless you all. And in my last statement, I just want to say my very favorite freeholder, what he said, and yes, Middlesex County is the greatest county in the land. Thank you all so much.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
No.
Second.
Motion adjourned by Fielder Valente, seconded by Fielder Tamaro, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Meeting adjourned.[1681.83]